It is eight thirty and I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the time to issue an invitation for a citizen to schedule a time on the Commission Agenda for an item not listed. Do we have anyone present that would like to put an item on the agenda? Apparently not. Then approval of the agenda?
Our nine forty scheduled agenda item, it was Brenda Colom was going to be here along with Vicki to present the 2017 Annual Report due to the weather. She's not able to come, so we are going to reschedule her for, I believe, the April seventeenth, the next meeting, so we can remove item seven C from the agenda.
And then Dick, are you having Mr. Wessel talk as part of your report?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Would I have a motion on the agenda?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the Consent Agenda, which includes approval of minutes, approval of travel and education requests, approval of personnel action notices, and approval of the Human Services Report. Do we have any changes or additions, subtractions from the Consent Agenda? Do we have a motion?
Move Approval.
Please call the roll.
Johnson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Approval of claims, anything to add on claims? Would we have a motion?
Move Approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We'll move on to regular business. Item A, action to approve Resolution eighteen dash ten, a resolution authorizing the purchase of concrete pipes based upon the price established through the Cottington County, South Dakota bid process.
We missed Department Head reports.
Oh.
It was on the...
Excuse me.
It was kind of hidden at the top of the second page.
It's just not in there. Okay. Who would like to go first? Should we start with you, Dick?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're fortunate with the weather being the way it is. Doug could make it up to visit. We, as you know, won two big grants that were awarded, and so the state will be sending out our award letters shortly, which will start the process going. And I think probably the best way to do it, Doug has the, some information on the awards that I think he can definitely answer any questions you might have, but also fill you in on some of the other ideas about how things will transpire and progress. Just an overview of the budget, the grant process. In the preservation this year, they had ten applicants, and those ten applicants used two point six million, and all nine were approved that were submitted. Then the remainder of the money, as you know, goes for replacements, and there were twenty-six applicants. So there's a very popular program. So, without any further ado, Doug, if you want to share information that you would like...
Okay. Well, first of all, I guess, I just want to remind you guys, this process to get to this day started a year ago. After we learned about our grant awards from that year, you know, you guys got one point four, three million dollars last year. That's a great amount of money, but we were still a little bit disappointed because we didn't get one of our bridges that we were, we really, really wanted. So what we did then is we sat down, we formulated a plan, we executed that plan, and now it's awarded today. So, that's, you know, so good guys, you know, because we just give you guys recommendations. You guys are the one that makes the decision. So you guys did a very good job to do that. So yes, as Dick said, you know, we had two bridges in the application process. Both of them got awarded. So, and so the grant amount is one point eight five million and some change. That's, that's a huge amount of money. Of the total, well, you know, I guess just as perspective, you can look, the total, the total pot that's in this bridge grant program is nine million dollars. You guys just took one eight, one eight five of it. So, you guys got your share. But anyway, so yeah, so going forward, so like, just, so congratulations, both of those got awarded. We will be getting information, just like Dick said, from the state as far as the paperwork and stuff like that. And it takes, you know, it takes a few months to get rolling on these, you know, just to get the paperwork through. So it's not going to happen in two weeks. It's going to take a little while. So, as Dick said, there was twenty-six applicants for replacement grants. Eight of them got awarded. The high score was eighty-two point one. The low score was fifty-seven point nine four. Your two bridges came in at seventy-eight point eight nine and seventy-seven point seven four. You were ranked number two and number three. So, you guys were solidly, in a good solid position, okay? Now, maybe, maybe to go, what, looking ahead a little bit. There is a four million dollar cap that you can, you can pull out of this grant program every three years. So, looking ahead for next year, and I, and I know, you know, we want to be happy about this year, but we've already got a plan for next year. We've got to, we've got to work at that. But yeah, so if you look at that, you know, last year you got one point four and change, this year you got one point eight and change. Basically, and that's going to apply to that four million dollar cap. So you are going to have seven, about seven hundred eleven thousand available in grant money next year. So you're going to have a little bit of a down year. Now, what we'll, what we, what we will need to do is, us in the department will sit together, figure out a plan, how we want to maximize that, that money, not only for next year, but for in the years ahead. So, we can kind of get in our minds, okay, this is the path we're going to take, and then we'll figure out, develop a plan to get there.
Doug, you have that sheet that shows the points.
Yep.
If Dick, Dick can show you how to lay that, so it'll come up where everybody can look at it. Is that right, Stacy? We can, you can just lay it right there and, in case, as you guys go on, in case the rest of the Commission would like to see that.
Okay. Just so you know, this sheet came right off the DOT website, the Transportation Commission's website. What I did is I highlighted the ones that were awarded grants. Off to the right side in red, I guess I added it in there, that was the, was the financial commitments, fifty fifty or eighty twenty, the first being the DOT commitment, the second being the local or county. I just did that more just curiosity, just to see where everybody was lining up. You can see, five out of the eight grants that were awarded, they did kick in extra money. So, that is getting to be, at least this round, and like I've told you before, that's this round, you never know what's going to happen next round. But at least in this round, it paid, it played a big point, big part of the who got the awards.
I think another thing to remember is for next year and years after that, the old STIP projects will be paid for, and that money, the state will include in the totals for this program, so it should make a larger pot to draw from. So hopefully, that will be a positive for everybody involved.
Yeah, the pot size is going to grow from nine million to fifteen million next year. So, yeah, you would think, you know, you would think, okay, so they're going to go deeper into the list of being able to award projects. Now, you would think that that would also then drop the number of points you needed. I don't know. Well, next year will be the, will be the first year that they do that. So at least we'll get some sort of indication of what we're going to need to do in 2020. It'll give us at least an idea. But again, I'll stand up here and say the same thing. I can just tell you what happened in the past, I don't know what's going to happen this time. It's just kind of the, the system we're working under.
And also, you want to remember that next year, everybody starts from scratch. We're all even. None of this carries over. If they re-submit, I forget, what did Doug Kennerberg say, the number that re-submitted? We were one.
I guess I don't remember.
It was, it was a small amount. But yeah, we can re-submit, but it doesn't change the points, it doesn't change anything. Everybody goes with a clean slate next year. So, we have to decide strategically, you as a board, what way you want to attack all the projects that we're bringing forward.
And, and I don't know if anybody knows the answer to this question yet, because we're going to our first, you know, this will be the third year program for the program, right? So, the applications that we submit, would they total seven hundred and eleven thousand then? Is that what our, our goal is, or, I mean, the request?
No, well, we're going to have to plan what, you know, because you, you still do have a couple of big bridges out there that you want to be replacing.
Right.
So, and, well, just one of them, you know, we're looking at a two and a half million dollar bridge. Well, if you're looking at an eighty twenty split, that means two, you would need two million dollars of available grant money. Well, you have seven hundred and eleven, and you have one point four coming in, you would barely meet that. And there is a project that I'm going to strongly encourage, it's a rehabilitation project, that's about, it's about a three to four hundred thousand dollar project up on County Road Six. So that could take three hundred and twenty out of that. So, we might say, okay, we're just going to go for that, we're going to let the rest roll over into the next year for this other bridge. We'll have to discuss about that, we'll have to plan, and then figure out where we want to go from there.
I guess what I would like, if, if the board would agree, when we get to the point where we set a date for our strategic planning and prior to the budget process, I'd like to invite Doug up, so if you have any specific projects that you have in mind, he could comment, even Colin sometimes, if you have questions on how come the, Doug on review or survey that he did, you know, he could answer those at that time, which would maybe determine whether you want to move forward with such and such a project.
And I have another question, but I didn't want to be the only one if somebody has a question. Dick, you tell me this all the time, and I forget, but I had a citizen ask over the weekend, how many bridges in Brookings County?
There are two hundred and twenty that would be considered structure. Some are under and some are over, but there's one hundred and forty-seven.
Over twenty feet.
Over twenty feet.
One forty-seven. And I think it's important for, if we've got people listening, or as we go down the road, talking about the fact that Brookings County received a really significant grant from the DOT, that everybody take notice of the fact that we have more bridges than, are we the second highest number of bridges in the state, or the first highest?
Third.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what number, but you're up there.
Yeah.
We're real close.
We have more bridges than most of these counties that are listed on this sheet, and that's important when you're looking at what Brookings County is getting and what's equitable, to understand, we have more bridges.
Yep.
Anybody else have anything?
I'd just like to thank Dick and Doug, all the work they put into moving the project forward. You know, yeah, we did make a decision, but it took a lot of work, and the DOT staff out there, thank both of them for work. I mean, they're easy to work with, they have questions, they can call them, they get the answers they want, and it shows, it, this really will help our bridge program.
Well, I'd like to thank you for your forward thinking. You've been planning and, and figuring out what it is that we need to do, and, and you bring that to us, and we really, really appreciate it, because this is huge for us to get these bridges, get those south bridges taken care of. So thank you.
It might be appropriate to explain to the public which two bridges we're talking about. And when we would possibly start...
You're talking about the two bridges right on seventy-seven, right just north of the county line. The one over the Big Sioux, and then the one, the overflow.
And when would we expect the project to start construction?
That's going to be up to the DOT. Both of the plans have been prepared by Banner and submitted to the DOT, it's in their review process.
Okay.
So, once they get review process, and we will pick up any kind of review comments they might have, if they have any, I'm sure they will, but, review comments on their set of plans, then it goes back to the DOT as a set of plans. They then send it to their bid office, bid letting office, who then sets the bid date, who then sets the completion date. So it's out of my hands now.
Are we talking this construction season or next year, more than likely?
I'm not sure, but I'm, my, my hunch is we're probably talking next year.
Next year.
That's my hunch, unless they really push it through.
I've had people ask that question. They said, oh, we got the grant, but I think it'll be next year, before you see completion of the project.
Yeah, I think, most likely.
One thing, one thing that the DOT has done to help expedite this process along is they've sublet some of the review process, because with their turnover they've had out there, they don't have the personnel to deal with it in a very timely manner. So I think that's good, don't you? I mean, it, it should get back to them a little sooner than...
Oh yeah, I mean, anytime you do a new process, there's some questions and some tweaking, but we'll see how it goes.
I guess one of the, the things that would, you know, so we're going to have three bridges out at basically the same time.
Could be.
Yeah. So, it's part of our planning process. I think we need to also look at what routes are going to be taking, so for a certain amount of time that they're going to be out, nobody can pass it. So it's, it's not a weight limit issue, it's, they're impassable. So I think we need to plan on where those routes are at, and if there's something we need to invest in some of those routes to make sure they're, you know, put extra gravel down, or extra corners, or something to allow larger vehicles to take corners that maybe they don't normally, I think that's got to be part of our process, too.
He must have read ahead on the agenda, because...
That's later. It's later on the agenda here.
That is, would, would open up a road on, I think it's sixteen, I think it is sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah.
If you guys choose to go that route, that would be, would leave, would give you an open, legal loaded route into the, into Brookings.
We could have that done by the middle of June.
Yep.
So that would really be a big plus.
Yeah, we've already, we've got the material price, we've already kind of tentatively lined up the guy to install them. All we need is your blessing. So yeah, but that's very true, Ryan, that's what's, what you need, we need to do, because there could be a lot of construction going down in that corner.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
The only other things I have left is Jamison called again with Volga, and he would really like to set up a meeting with either myself and one, or possibly two, or how many you choose to talk about Samara Avenue project, so that we can both give it some due diligence and consideration at budget time. And I'm supposed to get back to him if there's any particular way or times or people that that would you, you would like me to coordinate with him, or, I guess I'm asking what your thought process is on something like that.
Do we have a couple Commissioners that volunteer to work on that project?
I'll go over.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll go over.
Okay.
So, for Larry and Stephanie, it would really be nice if we definitely did this before budget time, and I'm sure from his standpoint, too. Is there any dates coming up that would not work? Or mornings or afternoons better, or...
Next week, we have a, we have a jail expansion in the afternoon on Monday, and I have a meeting Wednesday afternoon, but...
Monday, Monday at ten, what?
Uh, no, that's the legislative, Monday's out. Monday's out.
How long you...
I, I would assume half hour, forty-five minutes, because the first one, they just want to show us what they've put together for plans and get our thoughts, yea or nay. And then the other thing would be, in the future, they're going to want, this is me thinking, I don't want to talk for them, but I think they're going to want us to put in some monetary funds towards the project, and so therefore, the discussion might lean towards what would benefit us versus what is going to benefit the city of Volga, would be my thought. So it's kind of nice that we don't keep going in circles, not having the right people there. It would move forward much better if we...
What about Wednesday morning, the eleventh?
And...
Work for you?
You mean next Wednesday, or this Wednesday? Next Wednesday, or this Wednesday?
Well, actually, I could this Wednesday, can you?
Yeah.
Okay. Wednesday after...
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow afternoon, late? Or eleven?
That's fine with me.
Okay.
One o'clock?
All right. I'll try to set it up for, and I'll get back to both of you.
One o'clock at their city office, is that what you're going to try to set up?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay, that pretty well does that one. And then, our crews have been out, we've had a weird spring with the freeze thaw that keeps going on and on, we've been opening culverts. Thank you to the city of Brookings for allowing us to use their steamer. It is definitely a piece of equipment that we're going to want to look at as owning. It has made a world of difference, because in this particular spring, we've opened a lot of them numerous times, and it, it just not only saves our roads, but it also keeps the traveling public a little bit safer, too, because you don't, if you did leave the road, you wouldn't go into a big pool. We also, coming up, as we mentioned, we'll have the bid on the box beams, and then also, I'm going to set up some time and probably at a later date, visit about some of the, I'd like to get either yours, or Terry's, or somebody's interpretation of some of the rewrites they did on, on that House Bill eleven oh eight. And basically, just so that, if my opinion is different than what theirs would be, because it's going to affect the way we do business in the future, especially as far as putting together like our overlay projects and some of that stuff. So, I, I think it'd be good to, before we start planning and getting into our budget process, to have a clear indication of what those changes will involve. And, that's all I have, unless you have further questions or whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marty, would you like to be next? Vicki?
Good morning.
Morning.
Brian, it's letter H. To give you an update of what we've been doing in our office, is we had our surplus sale last Wednesday, and happy to announce that we got rid of both properties. The one in white brought fifteen thousand, and we had a number of bidders on that. And also, the empty lot in Bruce brought eight thousand, and again, a number of bidders on that. So, I'm very happy with what we received on those, and also with Burridge Peterson, they did an excellent job of advertising and getting people interested, and so I, it's good to, we'll be having those on the tax rolls now, so that, that's good news for Brookings County. And, last week, LeAnn and Stacy and I met with Adam Dentlinger from First Bank and Trust, and he is an investment officer, and we just had him go through the county's investment policy to see if, with his expertise, he'd have any ideas of any changes we could make in the policy to benefit Brookings County. And he really thought that it was a well-put-together investment policy, and at this time, there really wasn't any recommendations that, that he had. He thought we were getting a high amount of interest on our investments, and I also met with the city finance officer, and just comparing policies, we figured we have one at least comparable to the city. So that was, was good news. And I also met with Amy from First Bank and Trust regarding security and fraud prevention, and there's a couple things that we could maybe do, just to kind of cover ourselves with our checks and that, and it's something we'll be looking into. And with that, there would be no extra charge to the county. So it is something, I think, that would be worthwhile for us to do. And we sent out, met with Stacy, and we're, sent out all the budgets to the Department Heads, and so they'll have about a month to go over their budgets, and then we will get those back the middle of May, and get that all put together for you to start budget hearings in June. So we're working on that. No more news on the kiosk, they were coming to look at it in, where we wanted to put it in the sheriff's office, and something came up, they haven't been able to come. So, it's still in the process of trying to get together with the state. And we, the state, we ordered new plates for all the county exempt vehicles, so you will notice, like, the sheriff's office, all the highway vehicles, and the county van, anything like that, it's got new plates. So, they're in the process of getting those put on. So that is a process that we go through about every five years. So that is another thing we've done, and we will start collecting taxes, or we have been collecting taxes, but it should be increasing for this month, and that is pretty much everything we've been up to. Any questions?
I just want to make a comment that I really appreciate you looking at our investment policy, and particularly the cybersecurity stuff for the finance office. As you look at what's going on nationally, what I've learned is that local governments have, are becoming more often a victim on some of the, the banking things, because often they have money sitting in bank accounts. And being proactive on that is just excellent. Thank you. You're welcome. Chris?
Morning.
Morning.
Just a update, today is the deadline to appeal to the County Board of Equalization, which will then be meeting next week. Right now, as of today, I have six corrections or recommendations to bring forward. I have three that I'm appealing back from the local boards, the decisions they've made. Two of those are in agreement. We've talked with them and explained what and why we're appealing the, the local board decisions back, and they're totally understanding of that. One of them, right now, is not aware of that, but I'm appealing one, one back, and you'll see that at the, at the board meeting. And I have three just outright appeals right now. Two of them appealed to local board, but weren't going to be able to attend the local board meeting, so that appeal basically just preserved them able to go forward to the county. So, and then we have one virtually new appeal, and we heard that same appeal last year. So, pretty light year so far, but anything that's postmarked or received today is still valid, so. I got an email from Department of Revenue that my factor was approved. I'm waiting on the official letter and, and stuff like that, but as far as it goes, the email carries weight, that they've reviewed all of my audit findings and all of my sales analysis and things last year. I predicted point nine two two taxable factor for non-EG. She replied, and going through the stuff, basically re-auditing me again at the Department of Revenue and going through the sales, she came up with point nine two zero, which basically means if you've got a hundred thousand dollar house, assessed value, you're going to pay tax against ninety-two thousand of it. Just as a side note, last year, my factor was point nine four. So we... So we did, countywide, my office, we did a little bit closer to where we want to be. Um, and that's just a sliding scale. If we assessed at a hundred percent of everything, you would pay tax at eighty-five percent. If I assessed at eighty-five percent of market value, you would pay tax on a hundred percent of value. So it's just a, a balancing and sliding scale. So the closer we do to a hundred, the lower the taxable factor is, so. Um, and once we complete the county boards, I will immediately start working on my new book, The Abstract. So, um, that's due the third Monday in May, which happens to be May twenty-first. So that's the compilation that, that you guys will all work on your budgets with, uh, your growth, and how much value we have in the county, and broken out by all the school districts, TIFs, discretionary formulas, all of that. It's the whole composite. So, um, once we're done with county boards, we'll start assembling that, so.
Any questions for Chris?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bob?
Good morning. Looks like we got bad weather outside. We'll have to make a decision probably around noon time whether or not we're gonna cancel tonight's meeting. And, um, we've got one person coming in from Pierre, so we'll take a look at the weather. It's projected right now for the winds to pick up up to forty-five mile an hour gust. So it may, may not be feasible to have a meeting tonight, but we'll, we'll wait a little bit longer before we make that call. I, in my department, since the last meeting, we, I attended the Ten County meeting at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center. It's quite the facility out there. And, um, I'm gonna work with the director out there on an emergency plan and make sure they've got a good place for severe weather and, and things like that. I probably wouldn't be out in that area where we ate during a severe storm, but, uh, it's got better facilities for, for protection. And I'll work with him and we'll, we'll get him a nice plan set up. The same day, we also had a short meeting on the zoning ordinance revision with the state's attorney, Commissioner Pierce, and my deputy. The next day, March twenty-two, I failed in keeping our zoning meetings to end at eleven P.M. We actually ended our meeting at twelve-thirty A.M., and my staff left at one A.M. So, the biggest reason for that is, number one, it was a late meeting to begin with. It was, it was, you know, it wasn't the typical second or first Tuesday of the night. And if we, if we didn't get through all the stuff on the agenda, we would have to wait till May one because of the advertising time. So, we made the decision, I, I made the decision. Commissioner Pierce was there, but she, it's my call, so. If you wanna yell at someone, I'm, I'm the one. We, my note here is, we will work diligently to keep the meetings ending at eleven in the future. And other than that, I don't know what, what to tell you. It was a judgment call that night, we basically had to do it. I made, I made the call, so. The following week, I went to Washington, D.C. for a U.S. DOT gas pipeline advisory committee. For those of you who knew that may not realize what this committee is, this is where we change or update the code of federal regulations, which is like our state laws at the, at the next layer up. And, uh, whenever they call a meeting such as that, they, they pay all the costs for, for me to go. The only thing that the county has to do is approve my travel to go out there. During while, while I was gone, there was a joint jurisdiction meeting held next door. My deputy attended that. Got a call from Bushnell and a visit from their finance officer that they are looking to hook up their severe weather siren this year. So, when, when they come in, and they're still working on this, I don't know, city or town council level. But one, I told them, once they get everything done, hooked up, and, and they've got their, their receipts and bills and all that, to come to us, and I'll, I'd bring it to the county commission to see if we could, could help them out like we do all the other small towns and communities in, in Brookings County. I don't foresee that to be a great, a great expense, but I do see it to be a very important topic, so. I discussed a wildlife, yeah, wildlife fire division agreement with Chief Hartman, Fire Chief Hartman out of City of Brookings. We will be preparing documents to bring to the commissioner at a later date on that. He, he recommended that we put his name down, his, his assistant chief, Pete Bolger, and then myself. He, uh, obviously for, for wildland fire concerning their fire departments, it would be them, and anything local would be their call. But if we have to call in fire departments from Minnesota, which we're rather close to, then that would have to go through my office. That's why he recommended, recommended that. May is also wildlife, a wildfire awareness month. And when we think wildfire, we don't just think Black Hills. I mean, I've, I've seen several fires down by Lake Campbell that would qualify as a wild, wildland fire. And we got a resolution developed on that that will be presented to this board on May first. You may or may not sign it, obviously. But, uh, May's wildfire awareness month, and, and I felt it would be fitting to go ahead and honor that. Right now, my office is working on our South Dakota Office of Emergency Management State and Local Agreement Reports, which is due by April thirtieth. We've got a storm spotter class on April twenty-fourth over at the fire station, East Fire Station, over by Burger King. We are working on our two thousand nineteen budget, which is going to probably be an eye-opener, 'cause we've got a, a nine-one-one meeting coming up later this month. But chances are, I'm gonna have to start putting some radios into that budget sooner than later. We've been pushing it off, so don't, don't be shocked too bad. Our weather siren test, or severe weather siren test that typically would go off today, we've postponed into at least Thursday. And then if we got bad weather Thursday, we'll just cancel it for the month. Severe weather week is later this month, April twenty-two to April twenty-eighth. And on April twenty-fifth, there's gonna be a statewide tornado drill, which is gonna be a, um, advisory come up, tornado advisory, and then a tornado warning, all on April twenty-fifth. So your weather radios, if you've got them, should go off. I believe it's ten fifteen on April twenty-fifth, and, um, our E O C trailer is gonna be, it's a joint use trailer, and it's gonna be over in Valero later this month. The Brookings, City of Brookings Fire Department's requested it. May nine and ten, I've been requested to have, bring one of my staff members, it can be either one, they said. But this request comes from the South Dakota Office of Emergency Management. Lake County, they're doing a large full-scale type exercise, and they want a couple of people to work in their, it's working in the emergency operations center, but it's being the, the people that send out the injects to allow the exercise to run, to run smoothly. So if, if this board has no objection, I'll put in a travel request for me and one member to go out there and, and assist. We'll still have one person back here handling our day-to-day business, but, uh, and they come to help us when we need help, all we have to do is request help through them. And I've had Lake County here a couple times in the past. And there was an article in the Argus Leader on, um, our procedures on allowing pipes to roads. They called me on the phone, I answered some questions, and the article ended up in the Argus Leader. And during our zoning meeting, uh, I don't know if it was March twenty-two, it started, our meeting started in March twenty-two, and it actually ended on March twenty-three. Sometime during that time, either twenty-second or twenty-third, an issue came up on County Road Two, up by Lake Ponset, on parking in front of Smokey Joe's. It's a barbecue joint, used to be an ice cream shop. And, um, the issue is, you know, County Road Two was, was, the county widened it right before I started, back in what, two thousand and one, I believe, two thousand and two, sometime back in there. And, and the county's got a lot of, a lot of right-of-way, all the way along that road. And people's parking on side of the road, and some people thinks it's getting to be a safety. Some people are think, are starting to think it's a safety issue to be parking along the road there. The only concern I have is, and, and we discussed it with the county highway superintendent and the, and the Brookings County Sheriff Stanwick. You know, if you do it at Smokey Joe's, or, or, do we wanna do it on the whole road? From U.S. eighty-one all the way down to the state park on both sides of the road, no parking? Do we wanna do it so many feet from the parking lot at Smokey Joe's? And then jump down, we got Arlington Beach right down the road, which is another issue where they park on, basically on the side of the road like that. And that's where we may have to have a meeting with the county commission to get your guidance, 'cause it's your road and, you know, we got an extremely large right-of-way there. And, uh, so I don't know, anybody have any recommendations, um?
I was gonna talk about this in my report, but I think we've got time right now. What happened on the twenty-second at our, uh, county commission meeting, the folks that own Smokey Joe, Smokens, I think they call it.
Smokens Pub and Grub.
Yeah.
Oh, excuse me, sorry.
They were asking for a conditional use permit to put in a campground. They'd appeared in front of the, uh, planning and zoning board, I think it was in December, and they just didn't have their materials together, and it was tabled, and then they came back on March twenty-second. Uh, there were several neighbors that testified regarding problems with ingress and egress, and, and the safety issues on County Road Two. One of the speakers had, um, overhead, I don't know if he got him off Google Earth or through the D.O.T. or whatever, but he had drawings of the road and, and all these things. And they were very compelling. And what they said was happening is that apparently Smokens is a great place, and I plan on eating there sometime this summer to try that. But they said that what's happening is that they get such good business that people park on both sides of the road, and they're pulling boats, or they're driving a camper, or whatever. And if you go up there, you'll see that we have signs up that say, "Watch for pedestrians in the next three hundred feet." You could never see a pedestrian. And people, and the neighbors talked about how they don't walk down that road anymore. They don't walk, let their kids go down the road, they don't walk their dogs down the road, because people coming up and around the curb, they can't see anybody in the road. And I did go up and look, and, and I've talked both to Dick and to Marty about this. And I, I think we should seriously consider putting a no-passing zone in that area, and that Smokens, who has an acre of land behind their building, should put in a parking lot if they want parking. They've got the room to do it, that's where they wanted the campground. The campground failed with planning and zoning. The vote was five to four, five in favor, four against, if I remember right, you needed six to prevail. But when you go up and look, to answer Bob's question about where you would put it, I don't think we'd want all that county two road to be no passing. I don't know how we would necessarily enforce that, but, but I, I think from what would be a house at two oh eight down to three oh four, something in that area, should be a no parking on both sides of the road because of the safety issue, but that would.
You said no passing, but you mean no parking?
I mean no parking, I do, I'm sorry.
Okay, I was confused for a second.
That's okay, thank you.
So was I.
But I think we would rely on recommendations from Marty and Dick to, to actually figure that out. But it, it really is a safety issue, and I don't think we should wait until somebody gets hurt to say that you can't park in our right-of-way. And, and that's what's going on. We have, from the center line over, we have sixty feet on each side. And people put all kinds of stuff in the right-of-way because we have such a big right-of-way there. Sorry, Bob, I just.
Nope, that's fine.
If that explained a little bit on that.
Yep, thank you. And, uh, and the last thing I've got is, we've got a, um, the United Ways coming in right after we get done of our department head reports. And I just wanted to let you know, two-one-one, we haven't had to use it yet. But if Brookings County ever has a natural disaster, especially of large scale, we will be using two-one-one like you've never seen before in your life. Because two-one, that's the number that we would have as our, you know, you've heard of these big hurricanes hitting Florida and, and Texas. And there's always a one-eight-hundred number to call to get help. Well, we would use two-one-one at a local level to know where to, for our citizens to go get water, or whether there'd be shelters open and all that. We'd, we'd funnel all those through two-one-one. And two-one-one's got a real good relationship with emergency services, where they could actually bring in additional staff if they need to, under real big emergencies. So I just wanted to throw that in. On my way out, that's all I have. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Misty, do you have more than three minutes?
I, I'll, three minutes is all I need.
Come on up.
Good morning.
Morning.
Just wanna update you, looking at the spray season to start, even though, yes, we haven't, we've had our freeze thaw, freeze thaw. I know weeds are not growing yet, but we still need to get equipment ready. So I will have my current employees coming back, the two highway guys, and Gary Eggburg will be coming back with, onboard with us. Uh, Brock Swortos also will be coming back. And just an update, we do have interviews for an ATV driver tomorrow afternoon, so we'll be busy trying to get someone hired for that position. Truck drivers, we had no applicants for a truck driver, so it looks like I will be in a truck a lot more than I thought this year, which is all right. Um, and then also update on the dump truck from the highway shop, the, we call it the gray goose, that will be transferring to the weed department. My plan is to take the spray system off the cab over that we have at the shop currently and just put that on to the gray goose, under the gray trucks, so. Just kinda wanted to give you an update there, and we're looking at doing that sometime next week, if not the week after. Whatever works for time with highway departments, so. Any questions for me?
Are you going to re-advertise the truck driver position?
We have been, it's open until filled.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a scheduled agenda item at nine fifteen for United Way presentation by Heidi Gulickson, Executive Director of the Brookings Area United Way. Would you please just say your name on the record?
Yep, good morning, everyone. I'm Heidi Gulickson with Brookings Area United Way. And, um, I appreciate the time to be able to share this information. What I, uh, really like about working with the Helpline Center is that they already had the system in place. And so as Brookings County, we were able to kinda plug into them to use those services. And they gather a lot of data. And then so once a year, then they can kinda give that back to us as a report. So I just wanted to take a few minutes to kinda share that and be able to walk you guys through the, the information they've shared and answer any questions. Um, with the, the, the trends, the community trends that they send out, you can kinda see the total contacts that we've had over the years that we've had it. Um, and you can see that those numbers continue to increase, and I think that's just more people understanding that the service is there and what information they can get from there. So, um, I appreciate all the assistance that we get in the community of sharing the information. All of our other nonprofit partners do a great job of pushing the information out, and here at the county and the city as well. Um, one of the other areas that they're just starting to dabble and, and get the information out is the text messages. So I think we'll see that increase over time as well. And then the, the database searches is also an option. So if people don't wanna make that phone call to ask the question, you can always just go on and put in either keywords, or they have different categories that you can click and find information as well. So they try to make it easy to find the information out there for whenever somebody's looking for it. Uh, we have a basic resource guide that you can go in and download. And then there's also, um, it kinda talks about it in here, but they created a Brookings Area Mental Health Guide, which is also downloadable. And we're in the process of creating a, it'll be a little folded brochure that people can hand out, typically at a nonprofit would hand out to somebody else to say, here are a bunch of the services in the community. So it's more of an emergency, they call it the Helping Hands Emergency Services Guide. And that was something that they had in Sioux Falls and in Rapid. And at one of our quarterly nonprofit meetings, um, all of our nonprofit partners were saying, we need one of these. Like somebody had one in their purse and they pulled it out. And so that should be coming out soon, we're in the last stages of the proofing for that. Um, so again, just trying to make sure that people have the information of the resources that we have here in Brookings County. Then we kinda show the contact type, and a lot of it is just the information, some of it is, and then the referrals, listening and support, almost eleven percent at crisis advocacy, and then, um, just kinda other calls coming in. One of the partnerships that we have developed with the Helpline Center is with our dental van program. We now have them schedule all of our appointments, so it is much easier for, on all sides. Um, if a family needs that services for the dental van, they can call two-one-one anytime and get scheduled for the next time the van is in town. Uh, before, we were trying to fill the, fill the bus about, you know, three weeks ahead of time and trying to track down people and phone calls going back and forth. This way, they can call twenty, you know, two-eleven anytime and get scheduled for that. They're able then to do some follow-up calls, reminders, send out texts, all of those things. So it's really helped us administratively at the United Way, but I think it's also a much better situation for the families, um, that they don't have to try to remember to call in. They, as soon as they talk to somebody and know about the service, they can call and make that appointment. Um, the next section shows the, the types of calls that came in. And, um, this kinda gives. And this kind of gives the category. But if you go onto the Helpline website and actually go to sd.211counts.org, you can drill down a little bit farther into these. That is the live data coming in. And so if you click on mental health addictions in that system, it will then break it down at what kind of calls were those. So in that area, I just put down a couple notes. It was about 50% of those were crisis intervention, and then about half of those calls were people looking for resources, whether it's counseling or assessments and testing. Healthcare, that next top one, the majority of those calls were for the dental van, and then also people looking for prescription help. And then just to round out our top three, because we also know that housing, mental health issues and housing are two very big topics in our county and in our community. The housing, those broke down into rental assistance and then shelters. People looking for information on those. The next section down kind of talks about top unmet needs. And so when you look at that, you see some of those things listed and you're like, "But we have services for those." These are if somebody called in and they've exhausted all of the known resources in our community or they're ineligible. So even though we may have those services, for whatever reason, these people were still looking, they weren't able to use those. The next section talks about the suicide and crisis support. And just for those that aren't aware, the Helpline Center is available 24/7/365 with trained operators there to answer those calls. And these are the same operators that are answering the suicide prevention hotline for the state of South Dakota, so they are ready for any type of call that comes their way. And so in 2016, we had 46 related suicide contacts. And in 2017, that number did rise up to 70. And then they also listed out the statewide number that you can see there. So they do, like I said, they're trained. They know the procedure to help in whatever stage that call comes in, and they'll do some follow-up calls, they'll, you know, they know how to handle it. So we're, again, very glad that we have them as support for our communities. I mentioned that the Mental Health Guide is now an option. And again, this is just in a downloadable. So if an organization or a business wants to have these on hand, you can just click the link and print them off. And so this was a process that came out of the Mental Health Task Force that's happening right now as well. And then we talk about the Volunteer Connections on the backside, and that's a program. We've had 211 since 2015, and then we added the Volunteer Connections portion on in 2016. And so currently, Sarah Lippert is the volunteer coordinator for Brookings. And so she works part-time, and she helps our nonprofits find volunteers, helps them connect. She also helps people who want to volunteer find the right opportunities. There's a lot of groups that say, "We have 14 people on Tuesday afternoon from 3:30 to 5:30, and we want to make a difference." That doesn't just happen, Sarah helps to coordinate that and find those opportunities. She also does some volunteer management training throughout the year to help people who are in that field. And then she also conducts a monthly volunteer brown bag. So we have over 200 volunteer opportunities posted for Brookings County at any given time. And so some of those are ongoing, some of them are a one-time, but it's a one place that everyone can go to to find what opportunities are out there in Brookings, find out information. And when we did our Unite in the Fight Against Hunger food packing event last September, and we needed over 250 volunteers, it was exciting to come in at 8 o'clock in the morning, and we had three people volunteer, you know, sign up for a spot at 1 o'clock in the morning. It was like, well, I'm glad that was an option, that database was there for people to find it and sign up when it was easier for them. You know, college kids don't work in 8 to 5, their lives are a little bit different. And so being able to have the information out there for people when they want to find it, Volunteer Connections is the way that we can do that. So kind of did a quick run-through of the community trends for Brookings County. And again, just wanted to share the information that we've been able to gather of what's happening in our communities, but happy to answer any questions. Also want to say thank you to Bob for the shout-out about disaster services. Luckily, we haven't had to use it, but I know I sleep better at night knowing that it's there because if something happens, we want to be ready for it, not try to figure it out.
Anybody have any questions? All right, well, thank you guys so much. We're a little early for our 9:30 public hearing, so we're going to move on to regular business. And we'll take our public hearing at 9:30 when it's timely. On regular business, item A, action to approve Resolution 18-10, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a concrete pipe based upon the price established through the Cottington County, South Dakota bid process. Second. Any discussion? Anything you want to add, Dick?
No, this is the one we do annually, and then we buy our, like, box culverts or any concrete pipe through them.
Call the roll.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, action to approve Resolution 18-11, a resolution authorizing the purchase of bridge construction labor based upon the price established through the County of Spink, South Dakota bid process. Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Anything from you, Dick? Call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, action to approve Agreement 18-37, a purchase agreement between Brookings County and Jonathan and Nicole Moore regarding the purchase of real estate situated in the county of Brookings, State of South Dakota, and described as follows to wit, Lot 7 of lots 1 to 24 of M addition to the Town of Bruce, Brookings County, South Dakota. Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? And just to make the record clear, this is one of the two parcels that we sold on auction last week. Call the roll.
Johnson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D, action to approve Agreement 18-38, a purchase agreement between Brookings County and Larry and Jeannie Stufan regarding the purchase of real estate situated in the county of Brookings, State of South Dakota, and described as follows to wit, Lot 16 and 17 and Block 13 of second addition to the Town of White, Brookings County, South Dakota.
Move. Second.
Any discussion? And for the record, this is the second lot that was sold on public auction last week subject to commission approval. Call the roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E, action to approve Agreement 18-39, a State of South Dakota Department of Transportation Joint Powers Agreement for weed spraying services by the county. Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Misty, did you want to say anything about this?
This is just our annual contract. And it was actually sent out earlier than normal, I believe, so...
This is for spraying along the interstate?
The DOT, yes. Interstate Highway 1481.
Anything further? Call the roll.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item F, action to approve Agreement 18-40, a State of South Dakota Department of Transportation Joint Powers Agreement for pocket gopher baiting services.
Move approval?
Second. Misty, did you want to add anything on that one?
Nope, this is just a separate contract, so that way we have the full $24,000, $25,000 for spraying the DOT right of ways. So it's a separate contract for gopher baiting.
Any other discussion regarding this matter?
There's a question, is that by an hourly rate?
$50 an hour.
Okay.
All the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action G, or item G, action to approve Agreement 18-41, an application for occupancy of right of way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy.
Move approval? Second.
Any discussion? Anything from you, Dick? Call the roll.
Johnson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item H, action to approve Agreement 18-42, a purchase agreement between Brookings County and Fotera Pipe and Precast of Rapid City for Precast Concrete Bridge slab materials. Move approval?
Second.
Anything that you'd like to say on this one, Dick?
This is the decking that we'll use on that bridge on 16.
Anything from the commission? Call the roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item I, action to amend Agreement 18-27, a purchase agreement between Brookings County and Bose Construction for screened gravel, three-fourth crushed gravel, and HR class asphalt.
Move approval? Second.
Dick, anything you'd like to say about this?
This was an amendment, we had had a typo in the original, and so we just corrected it now, and we wanted official board action on it.
Questions from the commission? Call the roll.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
It's 9:30, and we'll proceed with our public hearing. We have a public hearing and action on transfer of a retail on-off sale malt beverage and a retail on-sale liquor license from Norgard &amp; Norgard LLC, Mark D. Norgard owner, The Cousins LLC, Tracy Dixon, Ellen Dixon, Chris Hendrickson, and Don Hendrickson owners. So Stacy told me that we are not quite following proper procedure on our public hearings, and so that under parliamentary procedure, we should have a motion in a second and then proceed with our hearing.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Second. All right. And then do we have the proponent on this come forward and tell us what's going on? That would be you, Mr. Norgard, I believe. Or whoever.
All of them. I'm Mark D. Norgard, and presently hold the license under Norgard &amp; Norgard at this point. And we'd like to transfer that license to the Dixons and Hendricksons.
Any other proponent testimony? Any opponents to the motion? Then I'm going to close the public hearing. Any discussion by the commission?
I guess usually Marty's, any issues or...
At times. People are getting less tolerant of noise around the lakes. And I realize that you're going to have certain noise at lakes. But Oakwood created some issues with us with outside bands and karaoke and stuff, and I don't know what they plan to do, but I think they just need to be warned of... It gets to be later in the, you know, if they have outside stuff to shut it down, you know, at a reasonable time. We've had complaints before when Arlington Beach was open with the noise. And we'll probably address the parking along there, and then also places that aren't open during the winter, you know, can plan on alcohol staying sometime during the summer, too. So that's my only concern, is that we just try to head it off. Like I say, outside bands and karaoke outside seems to create issues. And I do realize around the lake, there's always noise and that, but just something to think about.
We basically have a policy that we do not have any music playing after 1 o'clock in the morning. So I mean, it's shut down at that point. So it's not like it's disturbing people forever, all night, so...
Anything from the commission? Is there any... Come on up, speak into the microphone, and would you start by saying your name, please?
Sure. Don Hendrickson. I just wanted to mention, we do have plans of if, when we have karaoke or music, that we would bring it inside at some hour as well. So even prior to that one, you know, we would bring that inside, so...
And don't sell to minors.
Of course.
Anything else from anyone? All the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Back to regular business. Item J, action to approve Abatement 18-06, an abatement request made by Janet White for parcel 36730-00300-001-00 in the amount of $26.28. Move approval?
Second.
Chris, did you want to say anything? And I guess Vicki, did you have anything on this?
Same thing, recommend approval. It was just the city purchased part of that lot, and they're exempt from tax, so...
Anything from the commission? Call the roll.
Johnson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item K, action to approve Abatement 18-10, an abatement request made by Joel Osbeck for parcel 23980-11152-231-00 in the amount of $342.12. Move approval?
Second.
Anything from either of you on this one?
Nope, just that the house was torn down, I recommend approval. I did ask them if they wanted to put that one acre. This is a situation where they had the acreage, or they've actually got like a quarter of land and had a house on it while they wanted to build new, and a new house. So they had to split that off to have two housing eligibilities. And I asked them about putting that back together, and they don't want to. So in their mind, they're preserving building eligibility on the one acre piece, which was the father's house that, when he passed away, they tore it down. So it was torn down, we've got it documented. It's just a matter of waiting for the taxes to come so we can calculate and know how much.
Yeah, I agree with that. Anything from the commission? Call the roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item L, action to declare a Motorola XTS 3000 as surplus for trade-in and to declare 200 pounds of brass as surplus to be salvaged. Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Call the roll.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item M, action to approve changes to the Brookings County strategic plan. Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? We did talk about this at our last meeting. Anyone have anything to add or discuss?
Did you see all of the, yeah, all of the changes were highlighted in red throughout the document? So nothing different than what we discussed the last couple of meetings.
Call the roll.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Commission Department Director report.
Get all my stuff together here. Um, I did include the surplus analysis, you know, Vicki had presented that as part of the Finance Office, Officers' Report, uh, last, at the last meeting, we were at just, um, about just over thirteen and a half percent, and see then where that puts us. It, it's a little bit lower than we, what we have, it's better than twenty-sixteen, um, so i- it's a little bit lower, but again, um, a lot of expenses come out in the first part of the year before we really start seeing, uh, revenue come in. After April, we'll see this increase with April, once we get our first half taxes come in, so, um, Vicki and I are both comfortable with that at this point. The non-mandated budget applications, as Vicki had mentioned earlier, too, the non-mandated applications were mailed out to those entities who have, uh, submitted applications in the past, who have, who have gotten money from us in the past, and they are due back, at the same time, department head budgets are, our department budgets are due at five o'clock on May eighteenth. Um, we also did a public notice on that, so that, um, that not just those entities that have received funding, but all of the, um, uh, so everyone gets a chance to, to see that, so we did that public notice. Because we're looking at budget hearings, I would like to get that scheduled on your calendars now, so that we, uh, can plan, we can plan for that. So if we kind of follow what we've done the last couple of years, we're looking at Tuesday, June twelfth, starting at eight-thirty, uh, that's usually, um, a pretty long day, we usually wrap up, I don't know, four o'clock or so, um, and then Wednesday, the thirteenth, we would meet that morning, it would be budget hearings, yes. And we, I did speak with Luke at First District about the Joint Jurisdiction Committee meeting, and he said it is completely unknown and completely up in the air whether we'll meet on June thirteenth or not, so I said, well, I think I'm gonna go ahead and see if I can get my budget hearing scheduled, and if I can, then we'll just have to plan joint jurisdiction around that, because he's not, we don't know, I mean, they're kind of, we're in this process of they may be doing some extra work at that point, we may not be meeting exactly the same schedule as we have been, so, um, if that works for everybody?
What time do you want to start?
Eight-thirty. Eight-thirty.
On the twelfth.
On the twelfth, and that's a full day, that goes, I mean, I would plan until five, we usually wrap up about four, but I would plan until at least five that day, the full day on the twelfth, and then Wednesday, the thirteenth, would just be just morning, we'd start again at eight-thirty, and then, um, go until about noon or so. Does that work for everybody? Okay. And then, we do have, in the past, we've scheduled a review on, like, Ju- July tenth, um, that's typically only if it's needed, we aren't scheduled to meet that day, um, but, and, and we really haven't needed that in the past, and what we have done, if we just need a short, uh, span of time to make that discussion, to have that discussion, we can fit it in usually on one of the days that we meet, just at the end of a, a routine meeting, like either July third, or then we'll meet, or the, the second meeting, probably the second meeting in July, so, we'll plan on that, and then, looking ahead.
Could we step back for a second? So you're, you're talking about the second budget hearing?
We've, in the past, we've, uh, we've kind of set aside another day in July, and my, you know, we've, in the past, we've set aside an entirely different day than what we normally meet, and we haven't needed it, so I would say that I don't really want to schedule that for now, I think we could fit it in as part of a regular agenda item on, maybe not the third, but possibly like the twenty-fourth of July, if there's anything that we need to review.
And, and I'm only saying this, and, and I understand that there are five of us, but I won't be here on the twenty-fourth, and I would like to participate in any budget
I doubt that we'll need it anyway.
Okay.
We typically haven't, and if there is something that, you know, that Vicki and I see that's, um, a particularly hot topic, we will, I, we can present it on the third.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then I have, um, a number of things that I've added to my report since I sent this out last week, um, I handed out several things today, one of them was the work plan, and you can look at it, and it's, and it's very outdated, but this is something that, um, was created before, I think, af- before my predecessor, after my predecessor left, and before I came into this position, and it was kind of the chairman's way at the time to, um, keep things from falling through the cracks, so to speak, uh, when there wasn't somebody in my position at the time, and we kind of, we kept it, we kept up with the work plan for a little while after, um, I was in place in my current position, but then it just sort of went away, as, as projects sort of got wrapped up. Is this something that you want to continue to do? We would have to, I, I don't want to come up with the work plan necessarily today, I would probably schedule that for a future agenda, but is that something that you're even interested in doing? Um, if not, that's fine, I just, uh, wanted to ask the question.
Anybody have any comments? I myself would like to see us update this, and to update it before we do budget. And we could just put it on maybe the next commission meeting, and in the meantime, look at it and see what changes, if any, we would make to it.
Yeah. A lot of this stuff is outdated.
Yeah. Right.
So, yes, you want that on an upcoming agenda? Do you want me to start working on some of the topics that I feel, I mean, I would get rid of, a lot of this is done and outdated, so.
Yeah, sure.
And then I did hand out, um, a cup, a couple of weeks ago at our ten county meeting, Jay Gilbertson spoke on, um, the Repair and Buffer Strip Program, and then the statute, uh, the law that was passed that will come, take effect in July, um, that, where, where counties can pass a resolution updating the eligible, the waters that are eligible for this program, and so he had a handout for each county that was there, but he only had one per county, so, um, in front of you is a stapled packet, there's a map that says Brookings County eligible streams on it, that was the handout from him, uh, that he handed out for Brookings County at that meeting.
I guess the question on that is, is the commission interested in passing a resolution on the, um, Brookings County streams that would allow for the tax benefit if somebody puts up a buffer? And if so, then maybe Stacy, we could talk a little bit about what we'd like to do, and then Stacy could put this sample resolution back on for a possible action at another time.
You know, and I'd, I'd probably work for, pretty closely with, with Chris, too, in the Equalization Office, because I think he did have someone who applied last year, but the, the, the waterway that they applied for wasn't on the, the list of eligible waterways at the time, it was just north, I believe, of where a cutoff was that the, that the statute had listed, so, because the, part of that resolution is listing all of the different waterways you want, and I don't know if you can just do a, kind of a blanket statement, if you will, just to add all waterways that are eligible, and then Chris would look at that on a, on a case-by-case basis, um, people still have to apply annually for that, but if that's something, and, and, um.
Unfortunately, Chris.
Yeah, he stepped out.
He did call me on, to talk about this, and I think if I remember our conversation correctly, that he thinks we just should make any waterways in the county qualify. We're talking about such a little bit amount of tax, and it's a great environmental incentive, and if you all are interested in, in maybe a resolution that said that, um, all of our waterways that fall within the definition on here would qualify for the tax abatement for a buffer strip, then maybe Stacy and, and Chris could work together on a proposed resolution to put that together for us. What would your thoughts be? Would we have a consensus of any kind on that? Okay, I think I saw everybody shake their heads yes, and.
Okay, I'll work with Chris on that. There, I, I didn't hand this out, but our, um, as we're going through and kind of updating, looking at agreements and resolutions and stuff in the past, we looked at the E nine-one-one agreement, we just updated this in twenty-fourteen, I think Commissioner Krogman was, um, involved, and I think Commissioner Wyssett at the time, too, um, was on the E nine-one-one board when you were going through this, and I think that there was an agreement to set aside the thirty thousand dollars in reserves at that time, and then this agreement was updated from, uh, an agreement that was passed back in nineteen ninety-nine. You know, in looking at it, it still really meets the needs, there was one thing that Commissioner Pierce had brought to my attention, that the membership on that group says that the chairperson of the Brookings County Board of Commissioners, or a designated alternate, and we do always have our chair, because they actually do chair that group, and then the second is, um, the member of the Brookings County Board of County Commissioners, who is the designated liaison to the Brookings County Sheriff's Office, or a designated alternate, and so we haven't, you know, the, the, so currently Commissioner Jensen is the liaison to the sheriff's office, um, what we have done in practice over the last, oh, for, for a number of years, since I actually can remember, is we've had the vice chair be that designated alternate, so that they are attending the meetings for a year and are up to speed before they become the chair of that particular group. So, you know, the intent of the language is really to have that sheriff's department liaison be that member, but that's not what we're doing, and I, if, if that's something that you would like to see changed in this agreement, so it matches more closely to what we are actually doing in practice, which I think, I can see both being important, because you want that, that, that person who's going to check, step into that chairmanship to have some background with what's been going on, at least for a year, um, typically the liaison to the sheriff's office doesn't change, it can, but doesn't typically change very often, so, and sometimes that is the same person, it just doesn't happen to be this year, Leanne is the chair of that, um, that group, and Commissioner Bartley is the, is on that group, because he's vice chair of this board.
I feel like, the sheriff has a say in what's going on in the nine-one-one board anyway, and I think it's important to keep the continuity with the chair and the vice chair, so I don't think it's necessary to have the liaison for the sheriff's office involved, I, I think we should leave it, or make it the way that it is, the chair and the vice chair, because it would be terribly unfair to the vice chair to then have to step up and not know a thing about the nine-one-one, I mean, it, it needs to stay the way that it is.
So you would like to see that verbiage changed?
Yes, I would.
Sheriff, do you feel any need that it would be the liaison from the commission to be on E nine-one-one? Is that, is there some, again, consensus on that? What's going to happen is that agreement's going on an agenda, our next agenda for the E nine-one-one, to see if there's anything else that needs to be tweaked, everything looks pretty good, but that was the thing that I saw, um, so would we be authorized maybe to say we had a consensus on that, and after we have our meeting, and see what other changes the city might want to bring that back? I think I saw everybody nod.
Yep.
Okay. Laura and I have been working with Donna and Ashley, the, the Human Resources Office over on the city side, and trying to get Safety Week scheduled, and that is now scheduled for July twenty-third through the twenty-seventh of, during this summer, during that time, we'll have fire extinguisher training, um, we will be doing our safety drills, and then the picnic is scheduled, uh, for July twenty-sixth, it's the Thursday that week, at Pioneer Park, so I wanted you guys just to have that on your calendars now, if you're interested, and as we get closer, I'll be updating you more on what is going on with that. I believe that the drills for this building have always been announced drills, we've said this day, we're doing the fire drill at this time, and, uh, this year, we're going to say that we're going to be doing a fire drill on this day, but I don't think we're going to be announcing the time, so, that it's a little bit, we had, we had some issues with knowing exactly what the time was last year, um, so, we're gonna try things a little bit differently this year. Uh, just a reminder, too, it's not a commission meeting next Tuesday, but we do meet at eight-thirty on April tenth, next week, as the Board of Equalization. So that's been on your, um, calendar as that special meeting this year, so keep that in mind, and then the next.
Eight-thirty?
Starting at eight-thirty, yep. And then there's some upcoming dates, I did place on your, uh, in front of you this morning, the Conservation District Agenda, that meeting is tomorrow, I think I'd emailed that, that out to you last week as well, uh, that meeting is tomorrow at one-fifteen at their office on Sixth Street. Thursday, you have been invited to a, another Brookings County Drug Court graduation ceremony, that's at one o'clock, Thursday, at the county courthouse, up in the courtroom, up on the third floor, over across the street. Also, you've received a couple invitations from Farmhouse Fraternity at SDSU, and one of those events is taking place Thursday, it's the Totally Baldacious Cancer Fundraiser, they're hosting that at the Student Union at seven, um, and then the other part of that is April twelfth, that's on a Thursday, they're having a community leadership supper, that's at their, um, fraternity house on Twentieth Avenue, and there's a social at five-thirty and a dinner at six, April twelfth. Um, Monday, next Monday, the ninth, a couple of different events going on, we have the Chamber of Commerce Post Legislative Luncheon at noon, and I think I've RSVP'd for everyone, Ryan was not able to attend that, so I don't, I haven't, did not RSVP for him, but I have for everyone else. And then we do have a jail expansion committee, and I apologize, it's actually at one-thirty, not one o'clock, and, and agenda, specific agenda for this committee will go out yet this week with the correct time noted on it, so this was just kind of more of an FYI for the board, so, um, there is a jail expansion, and we have to meet here in the chambers again, uh, the community room was already booked for the, uh, city school election, which is taking place the day after, so they had that booked already. So one-thirty on Monday, the ninth, and then, um, lastly, uh, if you get a chance, as you're leaving the building today, stop down and look under the stairwell down on first floor, the historic, Historical Society, the museum over in Vogga brought over a walking plow to display underneath our stairwell to help take up some of that kind of empty space under there, and then they provided, um, a little sheet of information about that plow, and it fits down there quite nicely, and myself, and City Manager Jeff Weldon, and Assistant City Manager Kevin Catlin, had our pictures taken beside the plow yesterday, so you may be seeing us, uh, in the newspaper, perhaps, but, uh, I think, um, Chuck Cecil was kind of heading that up, so he was taking our pictures yesterday, so that's kind of, it's, it's very neat, and it fits in there quite well, so, that's all I have, unless you have any other questions for me.
How, how long do you expect the jail expansion committee meeting to take?
Two and a half, three hours, probably.
So from?
Four-thirty, four, four-thirty, yeah.
And again, I understood from our last commission meeting, you would invite as many of us as can come to that meeting, is that correct?
Yeah, I think Marty had mentioned that, that, um, yeah, as many commissioners who could come, I mean, we, what we do is, we, you know, it, it's an open meeting now, we, we create agendas, and like I said, and an official agenda will go out later this week on that, on that, I have to work with our architect to get that agenda put together, um, but that is open to the public to come and, um, listen to those committee meetings.
Thank you. Any other questions for Stacy? State Attorney's Office report? And I just want to take this opportunity to thank you, Steve, for all the work you did on the purchase agreements and the deeds and everything as relates to that, those two auctions, that was really helpful, thank you. Commissioner reports, Commissioner Jensen, would you like to start?
On the twenty-first, attended the ten county meeting out at the Brookings County Outdoor Venture Center, uh, a lot of positive, uh, comments from other counties and commissioners, uh, what a great facility it was. Uh, on the twenty-second, um, I first went over to, I went to the Nag First Annual Meeting, and, yeah, I don't know if any of you guys know it, but there is a new Speed Zone in Aurora, and I've got a ticket to prove it. And, uh. So after the meeting at seven o'clock, I went, uh, Advisory Board meeting at the OAC. And, so, after the meeting at seven o'clock, I went to Advisory Board meeting at the OAC. They're working on budgets out there, some preliminary budgets. Marty's been asked to assist the archery range, the pistol range, and then the facility. They're putting together a list, and it's like, like we said, it's first time they're doing it, and they're working through it. The offices out there are making good progress, I'm sure by now it's, probably took shape pretty good. Robbins Construction was working on that. We have a couple new employees out there, I met both of them. Let's see, on the 26th, I attended the Brookings Fire and Social out at the East, East Branch out there, well-attended by a lot of the community fire departments. On the 28th, I went up to White and sat in on the surplus sale of the property up there. There was five, six different bidders on the piece of property, and thought it sold quite well for, for White, South Dakota, I guess. And I guess that's all I have.
On March 21st, I was at the 10-county meeting, and I conducted one of the tours. I'd like to thank the girls for their efforts in decorating and setting up. It looked very, very nice, and I think that other commissioners and officials were impressed by our facility, and it was, it was a treat for me to be able to hold our event there, and, and they thoroughly enjoyed it, and that, it really looked nice. 4-H has their stuff pretty well put away, so we had that small conference room again, and it was, it was a nice place to host. And then on the 22nd, I attended the Advisory Board because Commissioner Krogman was unable to, and Commissioner Jensen pretty well summed up what went on there. March 28th, I attended interviews in the State's Attorney's Office, and we had some good applicants there. On March 29th, I went up to Watertown for the First District meeting, and we had a wind energy presentation, which was, it was really good. It was really informative, and there was a lot of good back-and-forth discussion. It was presented by, we had a roundtable, actually. And the, Jennifer Staley from, I don't know what all those, South Dakota Wind Energy Assistance Association, and then the South Dakota PUC, Mark Marsberger, and, no, excuse me, Darren Carney from South Dakota PUC, Mark Marsberger from Apex Clean Energy, and Luke Muller from First District, and it was really informative. We got a lot of information. There were a lot of, a lot of extra commissioners there who had questions about the wind energy. And every time I go someplace, I am so proud of Brookings County because they said over and over and over that they patterned their wind energy, their resolutions and how they did it to what Brookings had done. And they made, then they tweaked it and made it fit their, their circumstances. But that makes me so proud that, that we are a leader, and, and in a lot of different areas, but also in wind, wind energy. And then my last thing, I'm still on my high horse about taking away from our employees, and the reason that we decided to go with what the governor chose to do, I knew there was a reason, and I couldn't think of it at the time, when the state is closed, finance office pretty well has their hands tied because there isn't much they can do. They can't, they can't do issued licenses, there's a ton of things that they can't do when the state offices are closed. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
And to just give you an update, yesterday when the state was closed, we had 13 different times that we needed to call the state for help to get things resolved, and we couldn't. So, and also it affects the Register of Deeds office, too.
I just had a question for Stephanie on the wind energy presentation. Did they talk about any suggested ordinances regarding when those towers come down and how that should get handled? Did they give you materials on some of that? Okay.
It's, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Bartley, because you were there too, but I think that that's probably up to the individual counties because they're different wind energy contractors, I mean, different companies that come in. So, this particular company had its own plan for decommissioning the towers. So, and I'm guessing each company does.
And we don't have in our ordinance a plan, and that's one of the things I think that, as we review that ordinance, that we need to, to talk about. Would there have been a speaker that would have been a good resource on the decommissioning issue?
And again, some of the decommissioning issues were addressed by Mark from the Apex, basically.
Right.
And one of the things he mentioned that I hadn't really considered is because wind energy is becoming more energy efficient, towers are changing, size of towers are changing, number of towers needed in a particular area to produce the same amount of energy is, is less towers than before. So, you may take a farm that's existing and say it has 100 towers, and they may decommission to get down to 70 towers that provide the same amount of energy, if not more. So, those types of things, if a tower lasts 25 years, we really don't know what efficiency it might be, less towers even than that. So, it's hard to put a decommissioning plan together if you don't know if you're decommissioning an entire wind farm. There may be an entire wind farm that's not productive anymore compared to another wind farm that they could produce the same amount of energy. So, it's, it's somewhat tough to regulate in that regard as far as reclamation and a decommissioning, but there are some counties that were looking at decommissioning plans, but I don't know that anybody's got an ordinance that actually could look out 25 years.
Yeah, I don't know really at this point how you could do an ordinance because there's, there are too many unknowns.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, wasn't, wasn't that handled in their initial permits that they were given in Brookings County?
Yeah, we, it's in our conditional use permits and the actual, the plan that they give us, they give us their initial decommissioning plan, or else it's in the conditional use permit that they must provide one in so many months after the thing's in operation.
And each company has their own-
Their own.
-way of doing it, so I think it would be pretty hard to put it-
And one thing that's dangerous on a wind company, you talk about change in hands, especially a small wind company would change hands two or three different times. You know, our, our three wind farms in Brookings County is all owned by the same company, so we're actually at an advantage over some of the other counties that's got multiple owners of wind towers.
And what the issue is, is we can say that people need to have a decommissioning plan, but we have no tooth in our ordinance to enforce that. If the company goes bankrupt, not a business, then those towers stay there, they become the landowner's problem and eventually an eyesore. But, but what some places are looking at is bonding on that, and I was just curious if there was any conversation regarding bonding for decommissioning.
He did mention some requirements for bonding to decommission or, or reclamation, so to speak, but no specifics on it. I suppose every county could look at it differently, and I'm not, I don't recall the PUC having a requirement on their application for decommissioning, did they? Do you know that, Bob, if the PUC has any requirements?
They're similar to ours, they just require a decommissioning plan.
They just want to have a plan.
I don't know of anyone personally that has a, of the bonding requirement, and-
Hey, I don't think there is at this point, the way you talk, but it sounded like nationally there might be some instances where there are.
Yeah, different states, of course, have got different enabling laws on what can be done, and the Public Utilities Commission works different with each, in, in each state. They work under different authorities.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Commissioner Krogman?
Okay, March 21st at the 10-county meeting, and gave one of the tours. And then on the 29th, we had Brookings Health meeting. I'd, Bailey was there for their audit, and everything went well on the audit, no significant deficiencies or anything like that, everything looked really good. And so, they are continuing to off and run, and they made their first deposits into their investment group, council, or they have their new investment there, which is part of, us as board members are also part of that investment group there, Brookings Health. So, they're getting that started, and, and that's about it, so.
Commissioner Bartley?
All right, on the 21st, I also attended the 10-county meeting, and I had a really great tour led by Commissioner Krogman, and so I learned a lot about the facility myself that I hadn't had a chance to, to see. So, it was great information, and I think it was well-received by the county commissioners that went with us, who had a lot of questions, and Ryan handled those really quite well. The 26th was a busy day, we had the Mental Health Task Force, the Eastern Behavioral Health, and the Fire Department Social. Two of the things I brought up at the Mental Health Task Force and the Eastern Behavioral Health meetings were the Stepping Up Program that Bob had sent me an email on, sponsored basically by the NACO, the National Association of County Officials. There is a, a planned resolution, you basically fill in the blanks with your county name and your other things to participate in the Stepping Up Program. What Stepping Up Program is, is a cooperation between the county and the sheriffs and law enforcement officials to try and keep those people who don't need to be in jail with other mental health issues out of the jail system and in, into mental health counseling as, as needed. So, it's a pretty complete, if you go to their website, Stepping Up, on, on NACO's website, you'll see that there's all kinds of resources, all the way down to Twitter feeds to fill in the name. I mean, it's, it's pretty complete in what they, what they can accomplish. It does require us to pass a resolution participating in a Stepping Up Program. For your information, Cottington County, Minnehaha County, and Lincoln County have all passed that resolution, and I think it'd be an advantage for us to join that, that program. I did mention it to Marty, I don't know if he's had a chance to look it up yet or not. The idea is, if, if there is a funding issue somewhere along the line with a program that we want to adopt, that it'd be revenue neutral with a decrease in cost of jailing people on the other side. So, it isn't a program that costs us any money unless we want to look at one of those programs, ancillary programs that they provide, and the hopeful, hopeful cost reductions on the other side, not having them in jail in the first place. So, I would like to get that resolution on a, on an agenda in the future here shortly, if not necess, next meeting. It's pretty easy to put together, and we could have a bigger discussion about it then if you'd like. All right, then, Fire Department Social was good as usual. I appreciate their efforts, and they had a lot of retired people who came back and, they always come back as a camaraderie for this social department. It's fun to see all, some of those guys and realize they spent a lot of years on the volunteer fire department. So, they continued to honor those people by inviting them to that social. 28th was a joint jurisdiction meeting in the morning, and ICAP kind of overlapped for me. That meeting went well, I think LeAnn could probably talk about it more than I can, but we moved forward on one of the two subjects that we'll probably revisit in future meetings, but I think we got a lot accomplished in the time that we spent there for a couple hours. Twenty, 29th, First District in Watertown that we've already covered with Commissioner Miller, so that's my report.
Do, do you have some literature or anything on the Stepping Up Program that Stacy could maybe send out to all of us?
I can, I can get you a bunch of the stuff.
Okay.
Bob's got it.
That'd be great, and then when the resolution comes, we'll all know a little bit more about the, the program.
Yeah, and if you, if you just Google Stepping Up and NACO Stepping Up, you'll get multiple pages of things you can look at. Yeah.
Thank you. I also attended the 10-county meeting and, and thought that our staff did a really good job of putting that together. On March 21st, met with Terry and Bob, and we worked some more on, on ordinance issues, and we were getting some preparation done for our meeting on the 22nd with planning and zoning. At the meeting with planning and zoning, so, I don't think Bob said this, maybe he did and I missed it, that the board unanimously approved his administrative action on the LG Everest conditional use permit. So, the, the board all voted in his favor on that. We denied the conditional use permit for Smokey, Smokens, and I'd like to talk a little bit about the parking issue and, and get a, a feeling for where the rest of you are on that. We did approve two Class C conditional use permits for swine operations. So, there will be two new swine operations that are Class C. And then I attended the Brookings County night at the Fire Department, which talked to a lot of people, that was a nice event, and went to the joint jurisdiction meeting, which mainly the joint jurisdiction meeting focused on, we were looking first at the city's proposed comprehensive plan, which hasn't been adopted yet, but that should be forthcoming. The city planning and zoning board meets on that tonight. And then we looked at the county comprehensive plan just a little bit. Most of our time was spent talking about that portion of the city's comprehensive plan that deals with the land between our northern city boundary and 207th. And what the city is looking at, or that portion of, of Brookings County that will be in the joint jurisdiction area, is calling that urban reserve and anticipating that once we run out of land in the south, which is coming, because we've got all the water issues down there, that the next step will be development to the north. And there are some specific, two specific areas, one quite big on the northwest portion, and a smaller area on the northeast portion, that the city wants to, urban reserve means to reserve for development when that land eventually makes its way into the city and not have any other type of development in the meantime, other than our normal ag development. And I think that's going to be an issue that there'll be a lot of conversation on. And then we had quite a bit of conversation on whether or not there should be subdivision developments in the joint jurisdiction area. There was a lot of conversation about that, and the city is, is somewhat opposed to that, generally is the impression that I have, but particularly in those urban reserve areas. So, that'll be something that will be a policy issue that we're all going to have to talk about eventually. And then what came up in the conversation, and I was happy to see because we need conversation on utilities. If we truly are ever going to develop to the north, there's going to have to be utilities provided, and how that gets paid for. And Steve from Utilities talked about how their regulatory roles, I think each of you might have met with him sometime in the last year, and he explains how the regulations doesn't allow utilities to use their money to do utility development that is just for the benefit of, of one area as opposed to the whole utility users group as a large, at large. I assume that all of that is correct, okay? However, Utilities gives $2 million to the city of Brookings every year, and the city of Brookings, in my opinion, and I own, I know it's always budget, we know it's always budget, would be able to use some of their $2 million they get for utility development, and they wouldn't be governed by those regulations, and Steve specifically said that when I asked the question. So, again, over the next decade maybe, there's going to have to be conversations about what Brookings Utilities will or won't do in order to help development in the joint jurisdiction area, because you can't develop if you don't have utilities. So, it was, it was very interesting, it was a, a very good conversation. There, there was a statement that was made that if we're looking at allowing some large lot development, which you all know that's kind of a favorite of mine, and I've talked about that before, where people could own less than 35 acres, I don't know what the magic number is, maybe five acres, I don't know, and be able to, to have an acreage where they could have a different lifestyle than what they have in town. They could have a horse, or chickens, or, or whatever. There are a lot of people that would like to have that lifestyle. And there's some conversation that our development to the south maybe will not be appropriate for large-scale developments, and maybe, maybe there should be some room in that part of our county for those kinds of opportunities, and we'll talk more about that as time goes on. Did I, was, did I miss anything you'd like to add?
I think you covered it all.
Okay. And then on the 28th of March, I participated in the interviews for our new deputy state's attorney, so. And that would be all of my report. Does anybody have any questions about any of that? Does anybody have any questions about any of that? Okay. Then at this time, I would entertain a motion to move into executive session in accordance with SDCL 1-25-2, Subpart 1, Personnel Issues.
Second.